So we'll go ahead and get started here. Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning for our City Council Budget Meeting. We'll go ahead and get started with agenda item one is the roll call. So Connie, could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Black.
Here. We'll move to agenda item number two is utility billing. Cindy Robbins, Utility Billing Director, will give us, give a presentation.
Well, good morning, Mayor, City Council members. Cindy Robbins, Utility Billing Director. Their first slide here, we have, shows our organization chart. We have 12, including myself. That hasn't changed over quite a while, last six years. We are part of the enterprise funds. Next slide, here's our breakdown of our budget. You'll see in our operations, we came down 88,000. That decrease is our merchant discount fees. We used to pay those fees for the credit card users. We now have them, the users paying those fees. So we were able to reduce that out of our budget since we're not paying that. So that's where you see that savings. Transfers went down as well. Our next slide. So utility billing is not asking for any additional monies in our fiscal '23 budget. Information, all of our electronic reading transmitters, ERTs, have been replaced or upgraded at this time. New construction and maintenance are the only things that we will be looking to, for, to cost and to add to that. And those are all budgeted within our water department budget. And with that, that's it.
We've got Rick.
Cindy, when you talk about maintenance on the ERTs, is that replacing those that the batteries die or that go down?
We have, they're on warranty, so we do get to send them back on warranty. Some of them, that they, they do get ruined. We have people that will get in there, they can rip them out. And so we do have some maintenance issues like that, that we do have to replace. Very seldom that some don't work, but like says most of them, and that's when we finished that five-year plan. We got a really good warranty plan on those, where we didn't have them on the other ones that we have on our 100 Ws. So we are able to send those off and get them replaced.
What's, what's the life expectancy?
Twenty years, I believe, on those, so, yeah.
Thank you.
So we went to the good 100 Ws, which, the 100 Ws will also work if we ever move to an AMI system. They'll be compatible with an AMI, which we could do the daily reads.
What is, what is AMI?
It's an automated metering. Justin, do you know what AMI stands for? Because I was...
Advanced Metering. It's basically running on a network, so it's real-time versus drive-by.
It's like what Idaho power towers, we would put them up there. So those are the ERTs that we do if we compatible someday if we move to that, which will be down the road and would be nice.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Cindy?
So, your budget is not reflecting what all the salaries were coming down the pipe, right? Salary increases and stuff?
Are not reflective?
Not reflected in your budget because you didn't have it?
Um, I don't.
So, so no, nobody's had their, their, the, any steps in their budget? Is your budget for your expenses, does that include pay and benefits? Is that any of the increases that may happen?
I, this was the information that was provided at the time for us when we were making our presentation. I would have steps. I do have people that are working up the steps, so I would, there is a variance, you can see, from my nine, from my 2022 numbers to my 2023, that those are the numbers that I was provided.
So it doesn't include it?
So, at this point, that's what I...
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
We'll move to agenda item number three is Public Works. Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director, will give presentations on the following topics. Public Works, ARPA funds, engineering, GIS, science and environment. And my understanding that science and environment is going first because Hannah has a, a meeting...
On the river. Where are these? Or is it?
F5.
We did learn that.
Right.
Age 15.
I didn't know if they were separate.
That's right.
Okay. Let's see, it's all look good.
My, my old computer was F2.
Yeah, let's just make, yeah, that looks right. Okay. Morning, Mayor, Council. Hannah Sanger, Science and Environment Administrator. And yes, thank you for accommodating. A meeting with a, a funder for the water trail to, after this. So, Science and Environment, staffing has not changed. We're under the Department of Public Works, and we've had two people as long as I have worked at the city. Our budget for FY '23, our anticipated staffing costs have gone down. This is not, include any potential increases. This is from end of May numbers. Our, we added about $3,000 in operations costs for additional professional services increases, and transfers have gone up slightly, or 10%, 9%. So, budget variances, again, 3% for some supplies. And then, I'm asking for, or last year, we did budget amendments in February. This isn't on the spreadsheets, but we had $560,000, which was mostly grant reimbursements and reserves use for Centennial Park, and then another 123,000 that's coming to you for grant reimbursements. And then FY '23, I would like to increase my budget. I have $80,000 grant for the water trail, so that would be grant-funded. We have fuel reduction initiatives, that's not motor fuel, that's junipers removals. $480,000, that's grant-funded. And then, to analyze our stormwater program, hire a consultant to help us analyze any gaps in our stormwater program, so add $50,000 from reserves for that. So, a couple things related to all of this is we do need a stormwater utility fee would be very helpful for paying for capital improvement projects. These are, you know, on the ARPA list was $2 million for stormwater, and we can use many, many millions on capital improvement projects for stormwater. I do a bunch of work with City Creek and our open space, and working on fuel reduction initiatives. And ultimately, we have a lot of open space in Pocatello. That is the pride and joy of a lot of Pocatello residents, and we don't have an open space manager. Most communities our size do. I'm not asking for one now, it would be better housed in outdoor rec anyway, or parks. But, that, that, to manage that space right now, Marin is doing it on the side, I'm doing it on the side. We're coordinating well, but it does need a, a position. Same thing, GIS, I use a lot of GIS services, and it's a lot more efficient to have additional GIS help. I also, I know Building Department asks for money for software, and I would make use of that.
Claudia?
Hannah, talk a little bit about the stormwater utility fee. What, what is that going to look like? Is that going to be on everybody's water bill?
I mean, it, paint me a picture. So, a stormwater utility fee usually comes on your, essentially your water bill, and it's billed to the property. And there's a rate assessed for residential properties and commercial properties. And so there's a long process to figure out what an appropriate rate is. So it would take us one to two years to get to having a rate set and this enacted. So, that's just one timeframe to get there. One year would be fast, so two years is much more likely. And it would just, it's to, and if you don't have any stormwater discharge, you know, you would, your rate would be prorated appropriately. So there's a number of variables that go into setting a rate. And often, they range from $7 a month to some cities in the coastal areas, you know, it's $20 a month. So, I would, when we had one in Pocatello, it was closer to about $7 a month. It was enacted and then repealed before I arrived at the city. So, I can't speak much about that process. But Lewiston just passed one, Coeur d'Alene has one, and Moscow.
What do those look like?
That is, and, and so, I don't know what their fee rate is, actually.
Oh, they just decided they're going to do it?
And they've done the studies, and they've passed the resolution to start collecting funds, starting up either, either, they've just started, Coeur d'Alene's been in place for a while, and I want to say it's in the $5 to $10. And Lewiston's, I imagine, would be about the same place.
And that's monthly?
That's monthly, yep. And it, and it's, so it would encompass things that are not taxed, such as railroads, schools, et cetera.
Rick?
Would, would this require an environmental engineering assessment, then an outside consultant to figure out what needs to be assessed and at what rate?
Yeah, so we would, first, they would, this stormwater gap analysis would be part of that, so this would feed into that. But it would also, somebody to come in and say, here's, you know, here's what Tom needs to spend, you know, and so that's part of this. Here's your capital improvement plan, and here's what that's going to cost. And then, here's how we might charge people. So here are the decisions. Should, you know, how much should you pay if you don't have stormwater discharge, but you're safe from flooding because our streets take the stormwater? And how much should you pay if you're a small residential lot versus a large residential lot? And so, there's a number of variables. This is done nationwide, so it's a, you go through the matrix, and a consultant helps us out, and then they analyze, they do a financial plan, like our rate study, ultimately. They've done the legal analysis for Lewiston and Moscow of saying that this is a viable option in Idaho now. So, we would, they would sort of redo it based on however our code is written, but that would be a part of this as well.
Would they also look outside the immediate city limits to look at potential annexation property then, and how they might be affected?
It could be, that could be part of it, certainly. That would be up to us for how we want to, how large we want this study to be.
Okay, Claudia?
So, I, I just want to make sure I heard you say that this isn't just going to be homeowners and business owners, churches, schools, any, any nonprofit that has property?
Just, just like your water bill or your sewer bill. It's a fee for service, so it's not a tax, it's a fee for service.
And nobody's going to be exempted?
Nobody would be exempted. And I can come back and present more informa, I would like to come back and talk, I'm not prepared to talk about it all right now, but, so I am happy to come back anytime and give you an overview. We've got what Moscow did, and what Lewiston did, and Coeur d'Alene, and I can summarize all of that anytime, and we can talk about moving forward.
I, I believe the previous one we had, that predates me, it looked at impervious versus penetrable, penetrable space, and you could gain credits if you were able to store more than you produced.
Yep.
You know, it's kind of like carbon stuff and all that. So if you, if, a school or something like that, if they were able to redirect it out into their lawn and capture it that way, they didn't have to pay anything, or they even got credit for other schools, you know?
Yep. And we've done a lot of that work to, we're in the process of going through every commercial property and making sure we've documented where their ponds are. We've mapped where they have impervious surface versus not, not impervious surface. So we've got a lot of, you know, and our data's a few years old, but we're not starting from scratch. So we, I've just been slowly working, in case the council ever wants to go that direction, we need the information for our own analysis, but we're, we're not at ground zero.
And I believe the city actually was looking at, like, some of the parks, instead of having them at grade with the sidewalks, if they could capture water for a while, so it could permeate the soil, and the city wasn't on the hook for this parking lot. You know, you could, you could do a management of all your system and find a way, and so it's, it's a, it's a way of encouraging people not to send the water to the river.
Yeah. There, there's a lot of benefits. I'm a fan, and I'm happy to come back and talk about it anytime with options. I would like to just continue to start moving forward on it with a small ask from my reserves.
Okay, other questions for Hannah?
Are, are your reserves in 78?
No, these reserves are in Fund 17. So, and I have excess reserves. I have a number of reserves, it looks like I have a lot more reserves than I have, because I have them allocated for stormwater, for permitted administration. And so it, there's, there's various internal, I collect money from Chabek and Bannan County. If I don't spend it in a year, I hold it in reserves for future use, so.
But you have $65,000 in 78?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And I'm not planning on using any of that.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you could update us briefly on the, the demo, river demo project, particularly from a funding aspect? And then also talk about what your next proposal for the river would be and ballpark price? Because we, the trend from departments thus far is to come in with a lot of pretty big ticket items, and the river, to me, is very central to a whole range of, as, of, of issues relative to the future health of Pocatello.
Yeah, great question. So, Porton River Vision, currently working on the water trail, and nearly done with that, which I'm really excited about. So, we have received somewhere between, should get $80,000, $90,000 next year to put in access points at Batiste and Douglas Lane, and that leaves Simplot, an access point at Simplot is the remaining one. So, that should happen in the next year. And then, I can move on from that, and other parks is, Outdoor Rec is maintaining those. So, we're also working on Centennial Park project, so we've got design mostly funded. And then, the land trust is working on funding the remaining part of the design, it's about $100,000. And the estimated cost is in the $3 to $5 million range, and we should have 60% design this fall. It'll be submitted to the core, and at that point, we'll be able to tie down the design decisions. Our consultants have been talking with the core, their engineering staff, just trying to figure out which, which studies are needed right now for moving a levee, and what the core criteria are going to be and aren't going to be. So, our consultants who are working on this have worked on levees and, you know, on the Mississippi and around the US, so they are doing an awesome job there and know their stuff. So after that, next project is, one of the things we're looking at is restoring the Oxbows on South Second near Highway Pond, so running the water under the railroad tracks. I don't have a cost estimate, I'm going to go $5 to $10 million as a, as a really rough range. Working with the Greenway Foundation to get a trail at the same time over there, it would provide some flood mitigation, aquifer replenishment, and we're looking for grant funding on that. Upstream of Pocatello, working with the land trust on acquiring land for, essentially to put in sediment ponds upstream off of Marsh Creek is a top priority. Sacagawea Park, restoring the river down by the Abrazuski Stretch. And it, it can go on and on and on. But those are, you know, when I think of Lynch Pin, the other Lynch Pin is right down in the Concrete Channel, is, is historic downtown Pocatello, it's Center Street.
Right. So a lot of what I hear you confirming is that a lot of this money is not, it's not coming from, from what the city collects, from the taxpayers?
None, none of it has, to date.
Which is commendable, beyond commendable for you and your staff. My concern is that even more so than parks and rec, the city has not really put any skin into the game. And my personal recommendation would be to create a fund where we set aside $500,000 a year specifically for the River Vision. Because I think that investment actually is an investment in the future of Pocatello from an economic development perspective, from a comprehensive plan execution perspective, with the restoration of Old Town. And I just really think that it's time for council to step up and put city skin in the game, because in the end, these expenditures will benefit and help lift every citizen in Pocatello, because these investments will help Pocatello become a more successful community, community economically, and that raises all ships.
Well, and according to the comprehensive plan surveys and town halls that Brent did, the river is a big, is a priority, just like parks are a big priority for the people of this town.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if there's a process through which a council person can say when you're building your budget, could we please, in, in the, the budget that will be under discussion, could we please include a River Vision, the establishment of a River Vision Fund?
What we, what I would recommend is we just add it to that list of other capital
items that, that the city needs as well. So, why don't we add it to that? That way, the discussion will happen at the end of this month.
Okay, but the fund isn't really, I mean, it, it's a little bit different than a, than a waterslide, because it's a fund. So it's not a one-time. This is talking about establishing, you know, a council commitment on behalf of the city to, to uplifting one of our potentially greatest resources.
Why don't, why don't we, I'll get it put on that list, so we can have that discussion, and, and there will be an action item then. I can't get a feel from the council...
Sure.
I mean, I guess I could get a feel from them, but to actually move forward, and then we'll get it on there, and we can talk about it at the end of the month where it's an action item.
Okay. So Hannah, can you coordinate? And if frankly, as far as I'm concerned, if 500,000 is not, I mean, is, is like a drop in the ocean, and it needs to be eight, then I'm going to rely on your expertise and your experience for a recommendation.
Okay, I will consider that. I have a question of whether you would like me to come back and talk about a stormwater utility?
We will, I'll work with you and Jeff, we'll get that on a study session, because that's something, if, if it's been moved in the state where, I know that there was a time when everybody that did it had to reimburse and send it back and all of that stuff, and so if it's, if we're at that time, then, then yeah, we'll, between you and Jeff and I, we'll get it on a study session in the future. Any other questions for Hannah? Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Then we'll move to, I guess, Jeff, Public Works.
Yep.
You're not going to go backwards all the way, you're not going to have Ryan come up.
Yeah. That's easier to have. Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director and City Engineer. I'm joined today by Jennifer Flynn, my executive assistant. So, Councilman Cheatham was asking me about the number of books I brought in here today. I wonder if I brought in my whole, my whole bookcase, but just a little, little story for you. When I, when I took the professional engineering exam, I literally took in a truck dolly full of books. I only ended up using about a dozen of them, but they were there in case I needed them. I like to be prepared. So today, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Public Works Department, as well as the Fund 84 ARPA Fund. Here's the, here's the Public Works, jumping ahead here, here's the Public Works org chart. As you can see, I, I'm over the Water, WPC, Engineering, Science and Environment, and GIS Departments. And then, we have Deputy Public Works Director, who's over sanitation, street, and fleet. Here's the table with, shows our pay and benefits, operations, and transfers. If you'll notice, there's an increase in pay and benefits, I'll talk a little bit about that more. There's also an increase in operations, and again, I'll talk about that on, on a future slide. And then our personnel have remained static. So this one's going to be a little bit difficult to explain, hopefully I can do a good job at it. But my position is paid for, is split, the expenses for my position is fun, is split between Public Works and Engineering. Originally, it was set up to be split 66/33, 66 coming from Public Works, 33% coming from Engineering. However, in FY '21, we looked at my workload and the amount of time that I was spending with each of these different Departments, and, and we realized that I was spending more time as a Public Works Director than I was as, as a city engineer. And so in '21, that split was moved to 75/25, 75% coming from Public Works, 25% coming from Engineering. Last year, our previous CFO changed that split back to the 66/33, and then I had to go, go back to him and explain to him why it had done, why we had done what we, why we did, why we did what we did. And so this year, we're, we're moving that split back to the 75/25 split. Is that as clear as mud? So, the, what, what happens there is, is basically, in the Public Works Department, more of my salary and my expenses are coming out of Public Works, and less are coming out of Engineering with that split. Okay? And then another item is in line item number 4099, Professional Services. Last year, our previous CFO reduced this line item without, without my knowledge. We have a contractual agreement with our lobbyist, and, and that budget needs to be what it is in order to fulfill that contractual agreement. And so we're restoring that back to its original amount, so that we can fulfill that contract. I have submitted, you may have seen that in the last council meeting with the budget amendments, I've submitted a budget amendment to cover this year out of my reserves to cover FY '22, so.
And what is the total cost for our lobbyist? Is that a citywide cost? Is it split among Departments? Do you pay all of it?
So I, it, it all comes out of my budget. It's about $64,000 a year.
And what was the, like, say, this year, what, or, or last fiscal year, what was the return on that that we saw? So what did he bring to the city for that 64?
Mayor, do you want to?
I, I can absolutely, a, a number of things. The earmarks are back, and Pocatello was the only one in the state that actually ended up with an earmark, and, and that was because of our lobbyist there. And what he did was get money for the Center Street Underpass to get completed. That's been passed congressionally, done, given to the state. Now we just have to convince the state to give us the money, because Idaho's a pass-through state. Before that, we couldn't really develop the airport, and so he helped push legislation with our delegation to create a way for us to be able to develop our airport, opposed to, it was always getting hung up. We would have a developer, it would get hung up, and the FAA was involved, and they were able to get the FAA in the, into the aeronautical area, as opposed to the land use as well. And, and so, there were, he's done a number of things. Those are the most recent, but when I look back at it, he helped with the funding for the South Valley Connector, he's helped with the funding for just a number of things that, he's, he's probably, he's brought, brought hundreds, well, I wouldn't say hundreds, but may, maybe hundreds of millions of dollars to the city in his tenure. He's been the lobbyist for, since 2000 and...
16 or 18 years.
Yeah.
Is our pass-through situation going to be adversely affected because we don't have our financials?
No.
Statements done?
No.
Okay.
No, that money is set aside, and, and we just need to get the state to pass that on up. We had hoped that that would actually happen this last, last fall, so we could be actually working on that bridge and stuff this year, but...
Is that dependent on the legislature, or the?
It's the state transportation, I believe. I think it's the state transportation and...
So it's, it's dependent on... So it's dependent on the bureaucracy and on legislative?
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
Great.
Plus, with all the infrastructure money that's out there right now, he's really trying to track that and pursue as much of that for us as he can.
He is working extremely hard on the, the charging stations on the south end of town here at City Hall, and also the north end of town for us to get that infrastructure. And he's, I mean, it's tough to put a dollar amount to the things that he does, but.
And is, I know that the current administration in Washington has new non-carbon opportunities. I mean, they've upped the opportunities for solar, for residential, and I assume also non-residential. What about, given their environmental bent, what about sewer-ing? Are there any, and you don't need to answer this now, but I would be very interested in knowing what the lobbyist has to say about what's out there that's pursuable vis-à-vis our septic areas in the city. Because that seems to me, that should be a high priority. I understand bridges and all of that are too, but I also think our septic situation should be a high priority with the lobbyist.
And I can, I can speak to that as well. 2010, the first meeting I had with him, we talked about Johnnycrick, actually, and sewer-ing Johnnycrick. And every year since then, I've done that. Back in 2008 or '09, they went away from earmarks, and so it became harder and harder and harder to do. They've just started those back up. He's put us in touch with the EPA, he's put us in touch with a number of people. I know that the, those have been a concern for, I think, since Mayor Anderson here, we've had that concern and tried to address it. So he's worked on that and very well aware of it. He's helped an awful lot with the river and with the Army Corps there. I mean, there's just, like I said, it's tough to put a dollar amount to the things that he's been able to do for us that we haven't actually seen money for, but that he's been able to help stop and prevent stuff, and so.
Because I'm just thinking frankly about the ARPA money, because if, for example, there are apparently other avenues now through earmarks and the lobbyist for some of the items like charging stations that might be of interest or on that list, that perhaps when we're talking about ARPA, we ought to be looking not only at items that can't be funded through other means like, you know, fee studies, rate studies, but also looking at items for which there does not seem to be a current federal government initiative.
Sure. One other major initiative that we have coming up, so we'll be soliciting for a new rate study in FY '23. We don't want, we're not asking for funding for that in '23, but we will be soliciting for RFQs and then planning on funding that in FY '24 so that we can, we can start that process. Hopefully, we have a new CFO that can help us facilitate that rate study, so.
Maybe we will if Heather gets her ass.
The next thing I wanted to move on to was a little bit about utility locators. So the utility, the utility locators were two of the positions that were requested as new positions this year. The currently, the city currently owns underground utilities in streets for storm and power and fiber, and then also water and WPC. We are required by Digline to locate these utilities within three working days. And the purpose for this is so that we can minimize disruptions and also provide safety to the workers and the public. You can only imagine how disruptive it would be to a construction project to dig up a fiber optic line, or dig up a high voltage power line, or a water line in the middle of your construction project. So it's really critical that these utilities get located quickly and accurately. Currently, these operations are performed by Streets, Water, and WPC. They each send out people to locate their own individual utilities. And by creating these two new positions, we'd actually eliminate some redundancy that happens between those three departments.
So would we, if we're going to add two people to do work that's currently being done, would we see the equivalent of a two-person reduction in these individual departments? So we're actually adding on top of what we already have, we're adding two brand-new positions to do work that's already being done?
So there's already a lot of work that's not getting done because they're already short-staffed, and so what this would enable is for those departments to get the work done that they need to be getting done. For example, levy maintenance, or, you know, Water has a lot of work that kind of has to get put on the back burner because their guys, their people are going out and doing utility locates. So it's not like we would be, you know, eliminating two positions from each of the departments. We would just be enabling, giving them a tool that would allow them to do their job better.
So Jeff, is this, are these two in the rate study?
They are.
Because they're the thing?
Yep.
So are we currently charging the rate users for them?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, all the users or just the people that call out and say, "I'm going to build in this plot, and I need?"
It gets charged as part of the rate.
So why, could it be shifted somehow so that if you're actually utilizing the service, you pay at least, I mean, I understand that there might need to be some kind of a baseline, but it seems to me that, you know, once again, I mean, we don't have an impact fee, you know, developers, developers primarily, I would expect, are getting the benefit of this, and everybody in town is paying for their benefit, if I'm understanding. And maybe I'm, maybe all my neighbors are digging in their yards and I'm completely unaware.
Yeah, I'm going to have Merrill chime in on this one. He's actually on the Damage Prevention Board, and he's pretty up to speed on, he's very up to speed on the?
Thanks, Mayor.
I'll see if I can answer some of that question. The users do not get charged statewide in that. Digline is actually just a call-one locates to when that comes in. It was in the '90s when the laws was passed that if you have a utility and there is more than two utilities that are on this system, that the, everybody has to be on that system. It was years later, we fought and fought it where everybody was calling us directly at the different departments and that. It was around 2010 or so that we actually got on board and got part of Digline. So now we get the calls that come in and everything. But the ones that get charged are the utilities. We pay, you know, $300 to $400 a month between traffic, streets, water, and WPC for this service, for us to go out and locate because of the tickets that we call in. We have taken a lot of the tickets and deferred them so that we don't get every ticket that comes into the Idaho. We get, for instance, in May, this is last month, we had 266 tickets. April was 323. January, February, December, we get anywhere from about 175 to 200 tickets. So things don't even slow down during the winter around here anymore. It's continuing. But the users do not get charged. They, if you started charging for that, people are not going to utilize it. Now, the law was set up because we were having damages to our utilities all over, and more and more that should have been there. How this law was enacted was as the Fed said, "If you don't get a handle on it, State of Idaho, we're going to step in and take over." And so that's how the laws got enacted that way to, for our critical infrastructure and stuff there. So, but to come up with a?
So that's why, that's why it has to be in a rate study because?
Yeah, it's there, and we are paying for all of that, and it's not a, it's not a user-fee-based system.
As usual, you are a wealth of information. Thank you very much.
So really, it's in our best interest to locate and identify and protect those utilities, so.
Roger?
So it says estimated that a combined toll of approximately 2100 hours in 2022?
Correct.
That's just a little over one position.
Correct.
But we're asking for two. Can we backfill? Because it seems like if we're creating two positions, which three weeks vacation, you know?
Right.
It seems like it's overkill.
So there's a couple of things I'd like to talk about there. So 2100 hours, like you say, just slightly over one full year of work. But then at least like, yes, vacation and sick leave and different things like that on top of their holidays. The other thing is, we really need two employees in case one of them goes on vacation. You need to have another one as a backup so that that person is available. And then also, you need to have another person there for safety reasons. Because many times, these locates are happening out in the middle of a busy street. You need to have somebody there kind of directing traffic and making sure that this person isn't putting themselves in an unsafe situation. The other thing about it, this, the need for this has been increasing exponentially. I asked for numbers from Streets, Water, and WPC, and all three of them came back with their numbers over the last three years, and they've just been increasing exponentially every year. And so this is going to continue to increase. And so then, the other, the other part of this is, let's say that they're a little bit slow during the winter. These employees can be utilized for other things, such as snow plowing. You know, we're intending on making sure these people have CDLs, and that way during the winter, they can backfill in for snow plowing. Or we can help use them to maybe help update our GIS system. But there's other work that they can be doing when they're not doing utility locating. But I think for the majority of the year, we'll be able to keep them very busy doing utility locates.
Rick?
Jeff, does this job require any special equipment that we'll have to acquire, or we already have the equipment?
We have the equipment. It does require specialty equipment, but we do have the equipment that they need to do their job.
What kind of equipment?
Tom, do you want to come up?
I know, I know.
Geiger cutter.
Sure you don't need four?
Good morning, Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. So for locating electrical and fiber utility, what we do is we have a, it's a locating unit, and we put a low voltage signal on the wire, and then it passes a small amount of current over it, and then we have a receiver, and they walk above ground, and as they sweep, as they sweep it back and forth, it will, it will locate where that current is so they can put the paint mark on it. And then, once that's located, we, the contractor or the citizen that's digging's got about three-foot buffer over that line. We also, for stormwater, we have what's called a SOND, and it's a little radio frequency emitter, I guess is the best word, and we can run it down through a pipe on our jet hoses, and it gives off that RF emission, and then they can do the same thing with that to locate it. So, with pretty high-tech tools. With the water utilities, they, when they install the pipe, they actually install a locator wire with the pipe, and it comes up in the valve boxes, and so they do the same thing. They connect on a voltage, and then they have a meter that can sit there and read where that pipe is. The majority of our sewer lines run from manhole to manhole, and so you just straight-line them between the manholes. But we can also do the locator with the SOND that goes down in the?
Okay, Claudia?
So, so I get, I get that now, you know, Water's doing their own, and you're doing your own, and so these two people are going to be trained to do all of them?
Correct. So rather than having somebody go out from Water, somebody?
No, no, I understand. I'm just wanting to make sure that, and so are you going to hire? I mean, what is the criteria for being a utility locator? I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, how are you going to find somebody who's going to be able to use this high-tech equipment and?
So we can train them. I mean, they need to be able to think and be logical. They need to be able to look at maps.
Therein lies the challenge.
Trust me, we've got some great staff.
Therein lies the challenge.
We have some great staff. Trust me, we can find some people.
And then what are, I can't remember without digging through my bag of paper. What is, what are these two positions each going to cost?
I?
Before Heather's, before Heather's presentation?
Heather's raising her fist back there. I don't know if that's a?
I'm excited about the increase. You're on your own.
I don't recall off the top of my head. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at that.
Does anybody remember?
Justin, do you remember what that, those numbers were?
I was thinking it was?
Seventy-five?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
And was that including benefits or just?
Yeah.
Seventy-five-ish?
Yes.
That's what I was thinking as well.
For both. I mean, each.
Yeah.
So 150. And then are these people going to need, are we going to need new vehicles for these people, or do we have vehicles that these people can use? Because that's more money.
We've got some vehicles that they can use. We can find some vehicles that they'd be able to use.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
And speaking of vehicles, which this is probably really partly a Tom issue also, but, you know, Tom explained to me that because of the, one of the reasons that we have so many big pickup trucks is that based on the state, our participation in the state purchasing program, whatever the right language for that is, it is frequently, apparently, cheaper to buy these big pickup trucks than it is a smaller pickup truck or some other kind of vehicle. However, particularly under current circumstances where things like tires and services and gas are skyrocketing, I'm wondering, you know, what you foresee in the future in terms of perhaps having a vehicle pool? So if person X in a department needs a certain kind of vehicle on a certain day, they can get it, but they don't have to drive it 24/7 in case they have to put a piece of equipment in the back?
Yeah, so we've, we've looked into that, and we've talked prior on that. There's definitely certain functions in the city that require a truck. There certainly is. There's also certain functions that can require, you know, a smaller vehicle, even an EV or something to that effect. I think that would be a goal that personally, I think, to strive for is to try and differentiate those needs of all those different job functions and try and cater that to a more dedicated type pool.
And I, part of what got me thinking along those lines coming into today is, and I don't, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but, you know, we had a, it was indicated, and I ask you for the information so I can verify, it was indicated that department heads drive, I'll say Tahoe, as a, you know, an indicator for a type of vehicle. And it occurred to me that, you know, being a department head usually, probably doesn't entail hauling large amounts of equipment around because it's an admin job. And so then that got me thinking about, wait a minute, if that's true, it seems to me that those people who are in clearly admin positions ought to be driving the smallest, most economical vehicles of anybody else in the city across the board.
And I can agree with that. Some other things to think about as well, though, is like, I'll just use myself as an example. I'm on job sites every day, and unfortunately, in the terrain that the street department works in, you know, where we do levy maintenance and stuff like that, for that particular function, that doesn't really, isn't conducive to a smaller.
And that's why I say, for the most, but those who are in primarily admin positions.
Exactly. And so I think it goes back to what we were talking about before, is we just need to look at what each job function is and try and cater that piece of equipment to that particular job function.
Anyway.
Agreed.
Okay, I've got Roger, then Claudia.
Yeah, I'm still going to go back to, I think creating the possibility of two jobs to cover one job is overkill. And I think that we can backfill for one job from what we're doing now. You're still going to get a whole bunch of relief in whatever positions are doing it. One job will get most of it done whenever you need them because of sick days or vacation, you backfill from the way you're doing it, and you've, you've really solved the problem. But I think the, our solution is overkill, creating two jobs for 2100 hours. And I know it's going to grow, but let's grow into it. Let's not assume that we're going to get so far ahead of it that we've got so much room to grow into it that it takes years.
Okay, Claudia?
Um, Tom, just before we move on, could you send me, I want to know what the difference is we're paying for the big trucks versus the smaller truck?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
So just a quick one, the state, the state bid contract, what, just a, and you may already know this, so I'll just regurgitate it for you. But, uh, the state goes out to Ford, GM, Dodge, and they say, give us the cheapest price you can get uh, because the majority of vehicles we buy are X. And so you have this huge group discount for a lack of bundling, for a lack of better terms. Um, and so sometimes we, we've looked into this just recently. It's like, well, I don't necessarily need a half ton. Maybe I can get like a, I don't know what they call them now, Colorado. And the Colorado was actually slightly more expensive than the half ton. Just because the, when the dealer puts their bid together, they know they're going to sell 2,000 half tons and only 500 Colorados. So, but I can give you that information.
Cause if you, because I just want to know how cost effective, I mean, if we're only saving, say, 500 or a thousand dollars on each one, we're going to eat that up in gas, especially today. And I really don't see gas prices going down significantly anytime in that, once they start gouging, once they start jacking up prices, they very rarely put them back to what they were before crisis. So I'm just saying, if you could just send me that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, I've got Roger then Rick and Linda.
Somewhere there has to be a look at a vehicle for its longevity and performance, how much it costs to operate it a year. Those type of things, what maintenance, all those things. If you're, you know, and say you're putting tires on a, a smaller vehicle versus a larger vehicle and you're saving $200 every time you do it.
Yeah.
That $500 dissipates pretty quick.
Yeah. And we're actually seeing, uh, it's the same thing with tires as well. Like a 14 inch tire actually costs more than a 15 or a 16 inch tire because there's more demand for the bigger tires. So it, it's an ebbs and flow thing. But I agree with what you're saying.
Well, I, while you were talking, I just checked fuel economy. And the Chevy Colorado actually gets three miles per gallon less fuel economy than the full size Chevy truck in the city and one less mile per gallon on the highway. And that's, when I was in the car business, I saw this a lot. The, when I was selling Chrysler's, the, the small Dodge generally was less fuel economy than the bigger Dodge. Because you're working that smaller motor a little harder to achieve the same thing.
And that, and that, and I, and I can appreciate that. I just, I'm just saying, I just want us to be looking at all of that.
Absolutely.
Before we just jump on and buy the biggest vehicle we can get because the state's getting a great deal. I just want us to look at all those kinds of things. If it's less economical and, and not any less expensive to maintain, then, then that factors in. I totally agree with that.
And we actually just went through this exercise, so this should.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Tom.
Um, I just wanted to go back to that, uh, 2100 hours estimated. So it says that that's the estimated time for 2022.
Right.
Um, but you mentioned, I believe that this, that you see this increasing greatly as we, and that it already has been.
Okay.
Do you have any idea of what your estimate would be for 23 or going forward?
I don't off the top of my head, I haven't done that calculation. But I can, I can take the trends over the last three years for the different departments and I could come up with something for that.
Okay. I'd just be curious, because I mean, if we're basing it on this number, but we're talking about, you know, an expected increase, I'd.
Yeah.
I think that would.
I could definitely work on that.
Justify whether we need to.
Um, also Heather sent me the, what we, what we had presented for those, um, new positions. And we're looking at, um, it's an HO8 at 75,005, 2036.
Is that base or?
That's with everything.
Okay.
So, okay?
Thank you.
Uh, and, and just as I mentioned, this is, uh, this is in the rate study. These positions are in the rate study and, um, they're funded there. So have been for a couple of years. So then we want to talk a little bit about Fund 84. Not a lot new here, just to kind of reminder, we are, we are anticipating that we will receive 10.7 million dollars. Um, we've, in September of 21, we received 5.35 million. Um, and that money is sitting in Fund 84. Um, and we anticipate, and we've told, been told that the second round of that funding should come 12 months after the initial deposit. So if you can believe the federal government, we should have the other half of that money in September. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't take that to the bank yet, so. The only, so projects that, um, council has approved, um, count, projects that council approves to be funded by Fund 84 will be verified by me and will be approved by council. And all of these funds will be distributed out of Fund 84. So what we're asking for in FY23 is we're asking for a budget authority of the 10.7 million dollars. Just so that as we work on approving different projects, that money's not, it, it is available and it won't have to be amended in 23. Currently, the only project that has been approved by council is well number two. And we will, we will be bringing back another ARPA presentation, uh, in the near future, so. That concludes my presentation for Public Works and ARPA.
Okay, super, thank you.
Ryan, you're up.
Well, let's do engineering first.
Oh, never mind, Ryan.
But he can come up. Uh, no, you're fine. Um, yeah, you might want to be, yeah. Okay, so. Yeah, yeah. So we'll be presenting on engineering and GIS departments now. So here's the, the org chart. Um, if you'll notice, the, we have four, uh, positions in engineering that are funded 50/50 by Water and WPC. That split used to be 75/25, Water paying 75, WPC saying, paying 7, 25. But we've changed that split to 50/50 based on the, the amount of work that they're doing for each of the two different departments. Here is, um, the table with our pay and benefits, operations and transfers. Um, if you'll notice, there's a 114,000 dollar decrease in pay and benefits and about an 850 dollar increase in operations. And our staffing has remained constant.
Where does that variance come from?
Uh, I'll explain that to you right now. Great question. So, um, as I mentioned, we, we had, partly, we had four staff members in engineering that are paid by Water and WPC. Um, up until this year, we've had three staff members. We've had our senior utilities engineer and two of the envi, and the engineering techs that have been paid by Water and WPC at 75/25. However, we have a project engineer who works primarily for Water and WPC. And so it makes sense that he gets paid for by those enterprise funds as well. And so what we've done is we've shifted, um, Austin, uh, this project engineer right here over to, uh, the funding by the Water and WPC. And so because of that, that's one of the reasons why our, our variance went down on our pay and benefits. And then the other one.
We have a question, Claudia.
So can these other departments absorb that?
Yes. Yeah. And that's in, it's already been adjusted and in their budgets right now.
Before they presented?
Yes.
Okay.
But it does mean, does it not, that for example, that with these people shifted over, then their salaries and benefits, as those go up, then they are going to affect the rate study and potentially fee payers will be paying more even though those positions are not directly funded by a tax ask. Is that correct?
Uh, so, so like I said, the, the majority of the work that they are doing is Water and WPC.
Right.
And so it should be funded by the rates.
Right, but I'm just ma, I, I just want to be clear because it always sounds good when you, when you say it's shifted out of what is a direct tax ask into something else, but from a taxpayer and from a fee, from a citizen perspective.
Right.
It's, it's, they're, they're still paying.
I, I really, I feel like it's going to be a wash because, um, as, let's, let's take Austin, for example. As Austin is doing work for Water or WPC projects, he's project coding that. And so then, then the, the Water and WPC, they actually do a transfer in, in engineering to pay for that anyway. So I, I really feel like it's kind of going to be a wash.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the other one, the other item that had an impact on personnel factors is, um, as I mentioned previously, my split as Public Works Director, uh, City Engineer, um, is going, instead of, instead of 33% being paid for by engineering, now only 25% of my expenses will be paid for by engineering. So that results in a net decrease in pay and benefits. And then also, um, our new project manager, Becky Robinson, she replaced Maggie Clark at a lower pay step. And so again, that one had a, um, that had a decrease to, that, that decreased to pay and benefits as well. Um, in our budget line item, 5207, we increased that by a thousand dollars to cover, um, our maintenance agreements for our copiers, plotters and scanners. Um, we've been finding that we've been spending, overspending that by about a thousand dollars a, a year. And so we did a reduction of 150 dollars in one of our light items. And then we increased the 5207 by a thousand dollars. So that, that, that gives you that net increase of 850 dollars here on our operations.
Jeff, I have, this is totally a nerd question.
Okay.
From a word person.
A what?
A word person. I, can you explain to me what increased the, the last bullet point? What does non-reciprocal, I know what non-reciprocal means, but can you explain to me in this context, what the heck non-reciprocal means, please?
Great question. Uh, so, so essentially, we, we put aside money and, and it really, it's the money that goes into Fund 78 is what it is. Um, and so as, as we save money for copiers or vehicles or different things like that, um, each year, then that money goes into Fund 78 and, and it's essentially a savings account.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
Yeah.
A, a built-in 78, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So anyway, we, last year, um, this was one of the, one of the budget line items that got cut. And, uh, we have also recognized that we're not keeping up with where we need to keep up with uh, in order to replace our survey equipment, um, on a regular basis as we need to. And so we've increased that. Traditionally, we're putting 11,000 dollars a, a year in there. And so we're asking to increase that to 13,000 dollars this year, just so that we can, we can save for survey equipment, plotters, et cetera. We have, I, I think our plotter has gotten more, used more this year than I have ever seen it get used. I mean, it's, it's used by planning, it's used by, uh, police, fire, GIS. I mean, it, it's, it's a valuable resource. And if, if it goes down, it's got to be replaced.
HR in the future.
Yeah, HR, finance.
Ms. Mayor, and this is, you know, probably a question for you. I, now that I understand what non-reciprocal means, I really, um, I'm, I'm a fan of, uh, n- number one, planning ahead. But I'm also a fan of being very transparent, as this is, with the fact that, you know, a department is setting aside money for, for future use. And it's a designated amount and I understand emergency may require more. I get all of that. But I really like the, the sense of forward thinking that that projects for the public. And, uh, I also, again, like the transparency, like, hey folks, you know, we're not going to try to like, pad our budget so that we can then, you know, squirrel money away because, for legitimate reasons. I like the, the fact that this is presented straightforwardly and right out there. And my request would be that we consider this model for all departments. Rather than, be, because I think it's a good model for me. I mean, this is, you know, from person, personal, based on my, my values around transparency and so forth. But I, I think we see here over years, we have a working model that clearly functions for a department is, you know, comes with the blessing of the department. And I would like to see us consider this as a, as a, a function of every department budget in the future. So I don't know how, how can, I mean, I understand that that's probably dependent on a CFO and, you know, whatever that would mean.
So we'll, we'll, we'll work with the new CFO when we get one.
But I guess in the meantime, perhaps, maybe we could have a, it doesn't have to be any kind of a presentation, but perhaps, uh, other departments could be queried about whether or not this kind of model would work for them. Because I'm very willing to admit, there may be departments for whom it wouldn't because I'm just naive about their structure. But in the meantime, I, I guess I would request that we get feedback from all departments whether or not we could adopt this model. Because what that does, then it means the rest of their budget can be, you know, realistically, str, you know, clear based on past expenditures and projected increases without them having to go through this process that all of us that have been part of bureaucracies recognize as use it or lose it, you know, pat it or don't get it. I, I just like the, the honesty of this way of doing things.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so how many, um, how many projects did, do we, did we engineer in-house last year? And how many did we contract out? How much money did we spend on outside engineering versus inside engineering? Just out of curiosity.
Uh, I don't, I don't have that number with me right now. It's something we could look at.
Could you just, one of you email me? That'd be, or us? That'd be great, thank you.
Well, that, and that dovetails with a question I was going to ask later. And I always look at Merrill because he's the font of information. But, um, you know, I, I mean, as we've seen, you know, other departments saying, well, our workload is increasing and so we need more people, et cetera, et cetera. And it appears to me that so many things in the city hinge on engineering in one way or another. And from the number of, of, uh, items, agenda items that we get, um, that involve Merrill or someone else from engineering on a regular basis. Um, I, I wanted to kind of dig under the surface and say, do we have enough people in engineering?
So we're, we're doing okay in engineering right now. Um, just to, to talk a little bit more about what, what Claudia asked. So just because we hire an outside consultant to do an engineering project, doesn't mean that we're not involved in it. Um, if you stop and look at it, for example, I'm going to use the, the WPC dewatering project for ex, as an example. So we've hired a, an outside consultant to, to help us with the design on that project. We don't have the, the resources to do electrical engineering, structural engineering, um, uh, process engineering, mechanical engineering that, that go into, into that type of project. Nor do we have enough projects that we, that we can afford to staff that many type of engineers. But that doesn't mean that our engineers aren't project managing and, and working on.
Oh yeah, no, and I'm not implying that. I'm just wondering, I'm just curious as to how much we spend on outside engineering for.
It depends on the year, depends on what projects we have going on. Merrill's got hundreds and hundreds of developments that he's doing every year.
Yeah.
And, and it, it just depends, you know, sometimes WPC's got a lot of projects going on one year. And, and, you know, for example, I think you saw in Levi's budget, I mean, there was 11 million dollars worth of projects planned in the near future. And that means a lot more engineering costs. And so it just kind of fluctuates.
I think the question was, is can you get a number of what we paid, uh, outside engineering staff and stuff?
I mean, I understand all the things that go into it, but.
Last year, maybe the year before and, and send that to the council.
Not a problem. Okay. Thank you for those comments. Um, so one other thing I want to talk about, uh, for engineering is, um, kind of a major initiative. This year, we're doing the Clark Street Sidewalk Project. And that will do, um, pedestrian sidewalks, ADA ramps, all the way from First Street.
To 18th.
To 18th Street on the one, on the north side of Clark Street. Um, I know council, this is a, this is a critical or an important, um, thing to council, having sidewalks and having a walkable community. And so we had submitted a, for a grant application to do Center Street and we received that grant application. Um, that one is currently slated to be constructed in FY23. And that will do the same thing. It'll go clear from First Street all the way up to 18th?
No, it starts at about 12th.
Okay.
Because Center Street on the south side has a lot of its sidewalks in.
Okay.
It's a, it's not as big a project, but it's a. of its sidewalks in. So it's a, it's not as big a project, but it's a, to fill in all the patches and that, from about Twelfth to Eighteenth.
But anyway, it basically gives that connectivity all the way up center and, and down Clark. And, and so this is a, this is an important project to us. The grant that we received was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars with a twenty thousand dollar match. I think Ann talked about this project yesterday when she was talking about Fund Seventy-eight. So this is a fifty-three-ten grant. And it really doesn't fit to be paid for out of Fund Seventy. Fund Seventy kind of has restricted funds that, that need to be used, basically with federal highway monies, not, not these transit-type grants. And so we need, we need a budget authority to pay for this project. And so what we're asking for is that we get two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of authority out of Fund Seventy-eight, so that we can pay for this. There's about a forty-five thousand dollar match, but a hundred and seventy-five thousand of the two-twenty will be reimbursed. But we do have to pay upfront, and then we get reimbursed after the fact. That's why we need the full two-twenty in budget authority in Seventy-eight.
If I could, Jeff, just so I can, the same thing with Parks Department, and I know John will go into that later, and that too, with our trails and so forth. Everything has always been lumped into Fund Seventy. And because of those restricted funds, as Jeff is talking about, there, it's time to, we need to make a shift. Engineering, for instance, is, this is a big shift for us, because we don't have money in there for projects and reimbursement and that. We always use everybody else's money. We're kind of the bottom feeders, or whatever you wanna say. So, but we're having to make that shift. The same with Parks, is to make sure that it is within our budget. And the housing formula right now appears to be Seventy-eight until the new CFO comes on and says that something else can be used better. But that's our best tool right now.
Seventy is what, again? Remind me, Seventy?
Fund Seventy is our federal highway, street projects.
Okay, Seventy is, no, no, Seventy is highway.
Seventy is the one that Tom presented on.
Highway. The bridges and so forth. So...
Chris?
Yeah. And again, this might be partly a Tom question. But, and I, I know that we're, at least on the, on the south side of the street, we're, we're filling in. But what, what is our, do we have a, a plan or an intention around, around bike lanes?
So BTPO has put together a pedestrian and bike master plan, that really kind of illustrates what the corridors are and stuff like that. If you wanna, if you wanna go to their website, that's available on there.
Okay. But, but I mean, in terms of, of, as we're considering various projects, and, and even if, even if we don't have contiguous lanes, lanes at the moment, as we, as we do stuff, are we thinking about that and dealing with our easements with that in mind, et cetera, et cetera?
I could answer that. We do do that. And that mostly comes through the development process. Because we, as Jeff pointed out, BTPO, through the bike committee and everything, put together where we are. As far as where the bike lanes are, where bike routes are, your residential streets that, you know, in state of Idaho, bikes can be on there as, as a shared roadway. You don't have your more aggressive riders down Yellowstone and everything. But as we look at development, we look at projects, we refer to BTPO there.
What is BT, I'm sorry?
Banning Transportation and Planning Organization, sorry. It's Maury Byington, through our metropolitan there. Northgate, for instance. You'll look down Olympus, there is the bike lanes, and, and Gold Star in South Valley, and that one we do. We do look at those projects through the engineering. We look at the, the other tools that we have, and we make those adjustments. We get a lot of requests for bike lanes in, in other areas and stuff. But again, putting bike lanes and bike routes, trying to fund the costing for striping, signage, and everything gets pretty expensive. Plus, it's not within that plan, that we're, because every road can't be what they classify. You hear the terminology, complete streets and that. So we do have the routes and stuff there, but do you have more to add to that?
So I, sorry, a good, a good example of what you're talking about, when ITD, when we first spoke with them years and years ago about the project that they're starting this summer, where they're putting Chubbick Road under, Venture Way under, we fought very hard to make sure that that profile was wide enough to allow for bike lanes. So that, that currently is going on, and it's kind of a team effort from all of us.
And I, I know, I know that it's much harder with established neighborhoods and established streets. I get that. But, but that also means that there's a higher probab, I mean, that once again, those older parts of our community, I don't want to say they get shortchanged, but they can't be serviced as well. And I just want to make sure that whenever we are planning projects and so forth and so on, that we're, we're including, thinking about how we can upgrade and create as much equity as possible between our older neighborhoods and our new plans.
Danoga is Garfield.
A good example of that is Garfield. A few years back, we, we were able, it's, it was difficult to get it to fit in there. But we, we went through and we established a bike lane, we signed it, we striped it, and all that. So yeah, we're trying every time.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Can I have one more?
Sure.
I'd just like to, you asked about engineering and staffing and that, and we have terrific technicians, the project managers and stuff. And being able to adjust and shift, and we're constantly doing that. And that's how we're able to keep up with the different things, shifting and getting different assignments and stuff. Backing up, and I know we'll present this, Jeff will, he said he'd get you there on the locators as, as that comes in. You have a lot of the mapping and the GIS and stuff there that, that needs more assistance and that too, to be able to do that. One of the things that's coming online, we'll see as soon as the first lawsuit hits Idaho City, or whatever that's gonna be there, is that the state of Idaho, when, about four years ago, said that the service lines to the services, to the sewers, to the right-of-way, are the responsibility of the cities to locate and take care of. Now, that doesn't happen anywhere in the state of Idaho, and how that got implemented, and the cities and everything are, are, we're figuring out, how do we do this? And there is some language in the laws that provides some out for us right now. But as that gets more tighter and tighter, that, that's gonna take WPC and that locator right there, I could say that's gonna take up a third to fifty percent of that locate time. Your twenty-one hundred and double that as, as that comes online in the next couple of years also. So just, I wanted to make sure I at least got that part out. And as Jeff presents later, he can do that.
But that is also a finite, I mean, once those are located...
No, this is ongoing. If there's work...
Every time there's a locate, you have to go out there and locate.
No, 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 I understand. But, 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 but once we, once we GIS where...
Well, that's ongoing. The mapping and that, yeah, to map them in. But the locator, what I'm saying is that twenty-one hundred hours, where they have to go out, instead of just locating the main line now, they're locating the services. So that's ongoing. That's perpetual, perpetual as it moves forward. Because that, that just added that much more paint, that much more time, especially where they're plastic, they're clay, and so forth. And we don't have tracer wires. It's gonna get a little bit more complicated to where we may have to put us on different things and, and different, that's gonna, that's gonna, like I said, at least maybe fifty, third to fifty percent is what I'm projecting in that time.
Linda?
I just wanted to make a general comment. I, I also really appreciate the transparency about capital projects and what you're saving for and everything. But I do want to make the comment that in my experience on the council, that all the departments that make major capital purchases have always been very transparent and open about what you're saving for and what you're purchasing, and that we are aware of that and approve that and everything. So I want to thank our staff for, in my experience, I've always felt that things are very transparent and honest. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, it's Ryan's turn.
Ryan, it's you now. I've been trying to get you up to the table for a long time.
Had to wait through that one. Good morning, Mayor and Council. I am the GIS coordinator for the city of Pocatello. I'm Ryan Howerton. I'm a, kind of a one-person shop that coordinates pretty much with every department in the city. That is growing extremely recently. I've been approached by police, parks, or Fire Department, planning, and they're all asking for my services, and I'm trying to meet them as I can. So, go to the next one.
Science and engineering, too?
Oh, yeah.
It sounds like, I mean, not engineering, I meant science and environment.
Yes. Pretty much all of the, all of the departments minus maybe finance. They really don't use GIS too much. But all of the other departments are coming to me. As they go to conferences, they learn of applications in GIS, and they're requesting them. And I'm trying to meet these demands, but I don't want to put too much, I don't want to bury myself essentially. But, so what I'm asking for is a five hundred dollar increase for iPad data collection, or connection. This allows me to go out and actually collect GIS data with R2 GPS that I have. It creates a real-time GIS situation where it's live. So you go out and collect the data, and it's live on the map. The Central Square EAM has increased. It's a maintenance agreement that we have. Central Square is our asset management system. I oversee that and its administration, maintenance, and everything. So fifteen hundred dollars to cover that increase. And then, since I'm a one-person department, I rely heavily on interns and work studies. And last year, I removed three thousand dollars for work study, and I would like to see that, that back.
So we've got a question, Claudia.
I have a question regarding the iPad. I'm not a huge iPad fan. I'm just, I just want to ask, is that the most, is that the best piece of technology? Or, or is that just what you may do with, because it's only five hundred bucks?
There is survey equipment out there that is considerably more money than iPad. I'm using iPads because Streets Department had two left over, and they offered them up. They're older. I just added a Verizon connection to them, so I can use them. We really haven't done any real-time data collection. It's all been collected through survey equipment, and then we have a long process to get it into the GIS. What this does is kind of streamline that process, so it's going straight into the GIS and cutting out.
So this five hundred dollars is just for the connection, right?
Mm-hmm. So it's a phone line for the year.
Right. So, and you don't need a, a newer iPad to be able to do your job better? I mean, you're, you're asking...
I tried to make do.
You're, you're pitching, so I'm just asking, you can make do, or you can ask for what you need. And I'm just advocating that you ask for what you need.
Yeah. Right now, I don't need new. I'm trying to build the system where eventually I will. And I think that's down the road. I think there will be a time when I come looking for employees to work under me to collect more data.
Okay, that's fine.
Clean the data. So I'm trying to plan for the future while not overloading myself.
Right, right. No, and I can appreciate, I can appreciate that. There's such a thing as quality of life. It's not just all about work. So, okay, thank you.
Josh?
Two questions for you. First one, if we were to hire the two utility locator positions, would they be able to be utilized by your department?
I think it would be an integral part of my operations. It would work with my data. They would QC my data. It would kind of be a quality control on, on all of the assets that we have out there. Right now, I don't have anybody that's going out to identify locations of stuff. So what's in there is kind of what's in there. And...
As they identify issues out on the field, then they can come back to Ryan and be like, hey, I noticed that this line is actually here and not here. So, yeah.
Second question for the work study funding, do you find that that is an opportunity to recruit for various departments as well, for new graduates, for example?
Absolutely. The work studies that I get are, and, and the interns are extremely qualified in what they're doing. And I think the hard part about having to operate off of work studies and interns is having to constantly retrain. Sometimes, they only last a semester, sometimes they'll last a year. But I, I think everyone that I've worked with has been a, a great worker, so.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Claudia?
So with regard to those utility locator people, would utilizing them like you just described, would that take, would that take any load off of you? Or no? They would be doing...
I don't think it would take a load off of me, but it would improve the quality of what I do.
Okay.
So, like, I could provide analysis on stuff a lot easier if my data was clean and...
Gotcha.
So, I think there would be great value into having someone like that.
Okay.
Super.
My performance metrics, I'm, I'm working to minimize consultant usage. We had an agreement with...
Savage Tribe.
Yeah, Savage Tribe. And we haven't used him at all. So, working towards not using any consultants for what I do. I've got the skills to do it. It's mainly time. And then maximizing our return on investment, both on Esri, our GIS, GIS platform, and our asset management. There are definitely places where we can grow on both of those and maximize our return on investment. And then, so my, my major initiatives are, I want to expand current usage of both of those. I've kind of talked about GIS requests from fire, police, planning, zoo, parks, all of those. I think there are many, many avenues we can go down GIS-wise that we're not. I think there's a lot of power in GIS. And just expanding into those places, I think, will really help with the return on investment. But I do think down the road, there will have to be more investment. And then, I'm going through with our interns, quality controlling, and our existing data. I think there's an idea that someday, GIS, you know, you'll, you'll collect it all, and then it will be done. But I don't know if it will ever, ever expanding, ever... You find errors all the time. But my goal is to clean it up enough to where anybody who's using it can trust it.
So you're not gonna come in one day and say, I'm finished?
No. I may be wrong, but I don't, I don't see that happening.
The world's finite.
So, I, I am working to streamline collection and, and the maintenance of the data, and developing new applications that allow people to access the data. So...
Great. Any questions for Ryan?
I got one. So how much do you interface with, you know, you're a public GISer, but there's a lot of private sectors too. How much do they interface?
I really don't know if I interface with private very often. I, I do interface with, like, Bennett County, Chubbick. We, we all work together.
But you know, if I put in a GIS coordinate, I'm not going to you for my navigation system.
No.
You know, you know what I'm saying? There's gotta be some, some interface that it goes on. If not, there's a duplicity going on.
Yeah. We have the corporate world, as I guess I would call it, like Google, Apple. They're all collecting their own data. I try to use as much of it as I can, but a lot of it's... I try to use as much of it as I can, but a lot of it's proprietary, especially with Google. Costs a lot of money. Esri is like probably the, the main company in, in G I S that. And they provide a lot of data, so I try to utilize what I can. As far as giving data to anything private, I really haven't. A public request, I.
You know, for example, when I, when I go hunting, I can use the Onyx Hunt and I can tell private, public lands, for example. There, it seems to me like everybody's doing everything, but they're not talking to each other.
Yeah.
And, and it seems like if there were, there's more communication and sharing that this infinite world would be reduced.
Yeah. So for example, with parcels, I maintain my own layer for development purposes only. But I absolutely rely on Bennett County's parcel data, so I'm not duplicating that type of work. We, we kind of do the same a little bit with streets, but we also have. Lucidity that ties into our streets data, so I have to maintain my own while using theirs, so. I do look for any chance I can get to minimize.
And I, you know, I, you know, I see different entities around, for example, back to our discussion on location systems. I saw one person out doing location service on my way here today and they were at Clark and Fifth Street, which is one of our busier intersections and they had a small pickup, by the way. You know, so I look at what private's doing, I look at what we're doing and I'm trying to figure out how we're complementary to each other. And, and instead of doing it all ourselves, because there's got to be something, you know, for example, if we're able to collect a lot of data by contracting it without any vacation and benefits and stuff like that, because they've already paid that to their people, we're way ahead. And so I, I'm just asking those questions because there are entities out there. I've seen some of the. I don't know what you call them, Uber or something, they've mapped our whole city. They were here with their, you know, so. There are all these things and it looks like somehow if somebody could figure out how to coordinate them all, they'd be the guru, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
I, I think one of the things that, to your point is when you see a State Center or Summit or these private entities out locating, they are locating for and contracting for Intermountain Gas. Or they, Intermountain Gas does most of theirs. That's a bad example. So Idaho Power, the, the communications and so forth. Ryan is, is putting in the data and everything there is for, like we said, it's the water, stormwater, sewer and our fiber for our signal locations and everything else there. We have looked at, Jeff and I's looked at seeing going outside for locate with the Summit or State Center or one of those private firms to actually do some of the locating for us. And it always comes back that the quality for one we would get is, is not there where they're always rotating with our, with our mapping. Another is you talk about pri- proprietary or whatever there. We're a little nervous getting our water system, for instance, out there. Because of security reasons, that's why Intermountain Gas goes off of theirs, just because of some reasons there. So there are, are things in that, that area. Uh, as long as interfacing to. Ryan, because of his overload, is, is kind of. How to say, bucking me just a little. It's fun and all that too, but we are working towards our utilities where this is my side over here, the utility companies and dealing with the damage prevention board and everything and then interfacing with their, with the utility company. So we are working towards some of the interfacing, but again, it's because of his workload and we're not able to, to do as much at this time. So there are those interfacing's we work at and I would just close, I'd be admiss if I wouldn't say that Ryan's pretty humble sitting here right now. It's amazing when he took over and what we've done and the workload he's changed for my life in the development world with the utility worlds and stuff and what has actually been mapped to this point and what he is doing. It is, it is amazing, the stuff and the maps that I use day-to-day basis hourly that, that he is, he is putting together and the, for my ability to move faster to the, to the developers and what he's done for me.
And, and I really appreciate the, the importance of location. I lived in a community where the transcontinental system went through and somebody with a backhoe cut it.
Oh.
So it really reduced the redundancy of east to west of the whole United States. And, and they moved heaven and earth to get that repaired.
Right.
So, anyway.
Okay, any other questions? Rick? Oh, no, Rick Stan, let's take a break. He's not saying, let's do it. Ryan, thank you for everything you do. Jeff, thank you. And Justin, it looks to me like we're going to have a break before you start. But, so we'll break right now. We'll be back in a few minutes. We'll go ahead and move on to it after our break. Thank you for joining us after the break and Justin, thanks for your patience with us. We'll go ahead and continue on with agenda item number four. Water Department, Justin Armstrong, Water Superintendent, will give a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I know it's been an enduring, enduring week of budgets and, and everything, so. Anyways, again, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to present for you today. I'm Justin Armstrong. I'm the Water Superintendent for the City of Pocatello. Within our operations and staff, we have a total of forty-three employees. We have three of those, as Jeff had mentioned earlier in the presentation, that are housed within the Engineering Department. This is a overall. Uh, organization chart for, for the forty employees that are direct within my, my division.
Okay, Josh?
Who, who on that chart gets their lives opened up a little bit by utility locators?
Mainly the, the day service and the night service workers. As well as some of those based on the call volumes and the timing. Those, those responsibilities are shifting constantly based on priority and need. So there's times when our service worker's out on a call responding to an emergency or a leak or something like that. He's having to locate for that particular site as well as shutdowns. And then we also have issues with somebody else that's got a, got a leak and we might be shifting those to a plumbing crew. So a plumbing crew is assembled with, with three people typically. You've got a plumber, you've got a lead operator and then you've got a truck driver position. So it dismantles that crew for that specific task to go out and perform a, a locate at that specific site. Also, you might have a, a particular site that is, is large in nature. You know, some of these projects of fiber are multiple streets, miles. And, I mean, even our, our project on Pocatello Creek, that's two and a quarter miles. So locating for the contractor for that work is involving a lot of resources, a lot of time. There's relocates, so, so we're having to go refresh those marks on a continual basis, so. Even though we're getting these call volumes of, of, you know. I can't remember what Merrill had stated for the year, but some of those calls are not considering necessarily the, the relocates at those, those times as well. And so our guys, we spend typically eight hundred to nine hundred hours annually locating. That's one of our number one service calls. It's even above turn-ons, turn-offs and things like that. And so. You know, shifting that workload around, it's, it's all about efficiency. It's inefficient to dismantle a crew and have a higher-paid plumber and disassembling that task and re-prioritizing or resetting up an appointment for a turn-on or turn-off, so.
Thank you.
Budget comparison on expenditures, overall, we're down over fourteen percent over the previous year. The biggest changes are, are in capital. Large capital expenditures this year with Pocatello Creek Booster Project as well as our five million gallon tank project, as well as the five million gallon transmission line project, so. Some of those projects are currently in process. The five million gallon tank transmission line project is currently out for bid. And anyways, so these are, are one-time expenditures that are, that are shifting and that's really what you're seeing within this fourteen percent. We've also experienced a, a reduction in pay and benefits and I know H R discussed kind of the, the challenges that we've faced with hiring and recruiting. Last year, just for example, we lost eight people due to retirement resignation. That's twenty-five percent of our, our operating workforce and that's a lot of experience that's lost. And so really that, that variance is, is, is created because of that and the shift back from steps in pay.
Your resignations, were they due to money or was it people moving out of the area?
About half of those were due to money. The others were due to retirement. We had an individual, I think he had worked here about forty-two years. You know, two of those were supervisors, those were leads, and so that created a lot of shift and restructuring within our department.
Right.
Mr. Mayor? Justin, these construction projects you're talking about, are those going to be completed this year?
Partially, and, and I'll get to that in, in one of these other slides and kind of talk about that just a little bit more. Also, materials and services are down. Those are also down due to one-time project expenditures and supporting functions there. Staff has also been reduced to positions. That was mainly due to the restructuring of Fleet and, and some of that a few years back. Uh, revenue, uh, this revenue projection is based on the rate study. Rate study this year is recommending a three percent versus the four percent that we've had the first three years. That four percent was, was those build years to get to, get saving up for these larger expenditures that we had in, in the latter years of our, our five-year study. And so that includes three percent as well as half a percent on, on growth projections. Some of that growth is, is varying from year to year. We've, within, in water, we've got other additional challenges too with the seasonal variability of rates and. You know, as we've experienced, we've got a cool and wet spring and so some of our revenue is a little bit, a little bit behind at this point. Also Fund Thirty-seven, this is our capacity fees. This is the fund that we capture our capacity fees and for any new service connections. We make our, our bond payment out of this fund. So it's the most direct expense and that, that funds within the operating, our operation.
That was thirty-seven?
Yes, Fund Thirty-seven. So the, the payment, that's six hundred and, six hundred and seven thousand, seven seventy-six is for our bond payment. Budget variances, so this is more of the specifics. Materials and services. Within our operations, we're down forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirteen. Again, these are those one-time expenditures. We purchased a sign trailer back in twenty twenty-two, but we also have a new, new trailer that we're projecting for replacement that we'll go out to bid for. The differences of that are a shift of about ten thousand dollars in that line item, so. These, these tend to fluctuate based on our, our capital needs and our, our schedule for vehicles and equipment replacement.
Is the sign trailer, those things that you just put on the side of the street that have the digital, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, the, the digital boards.
Right, right.
We used it last year on, along the Jefferson Street project.
No, I just, I was thinking that. I just wanted to make sure that I was.
Yeah.
Thinking about the right thing.
They've been great to work with the public, to inform them of upcoming closures and things like that, so they've been tremendous help. Repair maintenance supplies, we're up about thirty-one thousand on that. These are specific items, adjustments based on our, our bid, current bidding and with materials. Some of those, those shifts are about thirty percent depending on the, on the particular line item and. Metres have held, held flat, but you know, your piping and some of those things, we've seen increases around fifteen percent. And valves, you've seen increases about fifty percent. So it's, it's all over the place and, and really hard to get a good number of knowing what we're going to look like moving forward. Professional services, we're down a hundred and seven thousand. These were due to the completion of our five million gallon tank and the recoding of that project. As well as we completed our test wells and evaluation on, on two sites in towns. Utility services, we're up. About thirty-six thousand. We've, we've had some good success in our energy efficiency cohort by reducing some of our, our costs there. Finding ways to optimize our system, better balance pressures within the system as well as just our metering. We've got a, a really great leak detection program as well, and so we've been capturing some of those leaks. And if we can find them, sniff them out before they, they become to the surface in an emergency, that reduces the overall cost. And. Idaho Power has also given us an incentive back, a payment back on, on capturing those. And so they've offered some credit back to us and we've been applying those, those back, so it's been a really good success story. Capital, capital outlay, Pocatello Creek Booster Station, that's an ongoing project. That project is set to be substantially complete next May. We anticipate that based on the, on the, on the cost balances between year to year that we would have about forty percent remaining on that, that project to fund into F Y twenty-three. The five million gallon tank, transmission lines, some of the costs have increased based on the recent material increases and contractor costs. And so we've trimmed some of our, our capital improvement plans out to make those adjustments, to make this happen. This is, this is a big priority for us because there's, there's a little over two miles of water main that moves from about the Johnny Creek area up to the, the women's prison area. A section of twelve-inch steel line that is, is failing and it's, it's very hard to access with equipment based on the ravines and the topography up there. And so that's been one of our priorities. We've made those shifts to adjust within the current rate study to keep it whole and balanced and live within those constraints of our capital. But there's just a few projects we're going to have to kick down the road and make adjustments in the next study, so. Well twenty-two replacement, that's one of our, our more shallow wells that. Is located on, on Cedar Street.
Is that one of the two that you talked about?
This is one of our existing wells, so we had talked about some future well sites, but this would be one of the more immediate projects that we've built within the, our current plan. We've also got the requirement to build and begin design on.
On two new?
Two new wells in the future, so.
I'm tracking.
So yeah, this is basically a, a redrill modification of that site. We've met with D E Q on that. They're allowing. Us to, to build within that same site. We know the, the. Underlying surface and soils and permeability and it's a good site for us. Satterfield Well, this is a, a project to activate that well and, and find a purpose and use for that. It's been higher in arsenic levels and right at that threshold of do we plug it into the system or can we find a, a better use for it somewhere else? And so this, by utilizing the Satterfield Well, that would reduce some of the, the burden that's up there within that Highland Bench area placed on our existing facilities. It would offload that. We would design probably an expansion on the existing pond water feature up there to store some of that water and then pump out of that, that basin to supply irrigation. So that's one of the things that we'll be working with our consultant and engineering staff on as well. Barton Booster Surge Tank. This is a booster station facility that's located on Barton Road. It's, it produces water to the East Bench, the growing East Bench, and we experience high pressures at that location that with, with startup, shutdown, dropping of power, those surge, those surge factors can increase within the pipe, one and a half to two times the pressure ratings. This softens that blow. It takes the burden and impact on, on our pipes and pumps and things like that, so. And then well 12 and 13 pump and motor replacement. This is a, a project that teams up with our transmission line project to replace some of that, that equipment in there and shift some of the operational features around to make it more efficient, so.
Where are those located?
Well 12 and 13. The, well 13 is, is off of Bannock Highway. Look at it out there by the golf course, and well 12 is First Avenue. First Avenue.
First?
First Avenue, sorry.
Thanks, sorry.
And then some of our, our vehicles that we're looking, that are up for replacement. We have a 10-year schedule on, on equipment and trucks, as well as a longer schedule on some of our larger equipments such as dump trucks. Those are a 15-year cycle that we get out of those. And then we're also looking for, uh, to purchase the vacuum excavator that WPC has. As they've talked before, our rightaways are getting more encumbered with utilities. And to safely excavate, we can use a, a vacuum excavator to dig around some of these common trenches where you have fiber optics and gas and things like that. To be able to pothole that, work, work around it, it's a huge efficiency for us to, to be able to do that. Believe it'll save the city a lot of time and money. So with the 3% increase, here's just kind of a, an overview of what that looks like for the medium, median, single-family customer. Overall, that's about a dollar a month difference in their utility bill based on 6,000 gallons of usage. And as a comparison amongst other comparable cities, we're right there, right in the middle, so. And to note, I mean, some of these, these other cities don't have the hillsides and challenges of additional infrastructure that we have here in Pocatello, and so we feel that what we do based on our, our programs of capital replacement and having crews to perform that work internally versus hiring and bidding out some of these projects help keep our rates low.
Rick?
I'd like to go back to the revenue sheet. Under Enterprise Fund 31, your LIDs, what's left in, how, how long does that LID have left to run? And what kind of a balance is left in it? It looks pretty small.
Yeah, it is pretty mo- pretty small. I don't have the particular details on that one other than I know that that LID was set up for one of our mobile home parks, was the Oakwood Manor. And that should be pretty close to expiring if it's, if it's about a 20-year, 25-year LID.
I would say that was a 25-year LID, and so it's got to be close.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wanted to say that was 2004, 2005.
Yeah, something like that.
I remember inspecting it, but it's been here a long time, so.
Any other questions for Justin? Super, thank you, Justin.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Council, with that, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.